Regular meeting.
Motion to accept is submitted, Mr. Chairman.
I have a motion to accept is submitted. Do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Before we get to new business, I'm going to ask for a moment of silence for one of our staff members, Kyle Brown. Had the passion of one of his family members, just asked for a moment of silence for him. Thank you. We've got new business. Final minor flat, Hope Drive subdivision, 3.01 acres. Property located at 112 Hope Drive. Tax map 0181 Group E parcel 10. R2 zoning district, partial owned by IB Property Holdings LLC. Ms. Casanzo?
Okay, after the workshop, we had 20 technical items. They have all been addressed. In addition, the deck that was encroaching in the side setback has, the applicant has agreed to have it removed. And the driveway will be relocated when the, when the new boundary lines are drawn. So, all technical items have been addressed as far as staff is concerned.
Chairman, with all the items being addressed, make a motion to accept is submitted.
I have a motion to accept is submitted. Do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Number two, we have a site plan, express auto pole barn, 9.79 acres. Property located at 409 Dixie County Drive. Tax map 014 parcel 71.01. I-1 zoning district, partial owned by Tim Tomlin. Ms. Casanzo?
Okay, uh, we had 19 technical items at the workshop. And the most important one was as far as stormwater quality and quantity being, not being affected. We did receive a stamped engineered letter indicating that, that quality and quantity shall not be affected by this proposed three-sided pole barn. And as far as the remaining technical items, they've all been addressed. And staff is satisfied.
Chairman, with all items being addressed, make a motion to accept is submitted.
I have a motion to accept is submitted. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Opposed. I'm sorry, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Next, we have minor flat, Sam subdivision, 2.24 acres. Property located at the termination of Buffalo Drive. Tax map 032, parcel 5.06. R1 zoning district, partial owned by L&amp;E Properties Developers Incorporated. Ms. Casanzo?
Okay, uh, this, as we discussed at the workshop, this is just a, a minor two-lot subdivision to subdivide one, one piece of the property from Woodsong to give it to a previous business owner or the business partner. We had simply asked that they add the acreage of the two lots and make some minor changes. All, all 12 of the technical items have been addressed at this time, and staff is satisfied.
Chairman, with all items being addressed, make a motion to accept is submitted.
I have a motion to accept is submitted. Do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Next, we have a revised concept plan, Woodsong subdivision, section five and six. 19 acres, property located at the intersection of Potts Crossing and Buffalo Drive. Tax map 032, parcel 5.06. R1 zoning district, partial owned by L&amp;E Properties Developers Incorporated. Ms. Casanzo?
Okay, as we discussed the workshop, this is just a simple revision of phase five and six of the Woodsong subdivision, just shifting of a couple of lots. We had asked that they add the lot numbers for phase six, and they have done that. There are no technical items to be addressed at this time.
With all items being addressed, Mr. Chairman, make a motion to accept is submitted.
I have a motion to accept is submitted. Do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Next, we have preliminary flat, Woodsong subdivision, section V. 9.16 acres, property located along Buffalo Drive. Tax map 032, parcel 5.06. R1 zoning district, partial owned by L&amp;E Properties Developers Incorporated. Ms. Casanzo?
Okay, once again, preliminary plat for section five of Woodsong. It's going to be 20 lots on 9.16 acres. They have gone and addressed all 14 of the technical items, which were fairly minor to begin with. We have no comments at this time.
Chairman, with all items being addressed, make a motion to accept is submitted.
I have a motion to accept is submitted. Do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Next, we have a site plan for Archangel Michael Copick Orthodox Church. 3.99 acres, modular classroom building, additional additions, gymnasium. Property located at 173 Cherokee Drive. Tax map 017C Group E parcel 27. R1 zoning district, partial owned by Archangel Michael Copick Orthodox Church. Ms. Casanzo?
Okay, we have been looking at this item for a few months now. There were 30 technical items at the workshop. And we worked diligently with the engineer, myself and Mr. Brown, who is unfortunately unable to be here tonight. And the majority of the comments at the workshop had to do with the water and sewer, stormwater maintenance issues. And I was informed by Mr. Brown that he is satisfied with the new submittal. The other concerns that we did have had to do with the timeframe and the, we had asked them to please place a note on there stating that each building addition, when a permit is, a building permit is asked, is applied for, that they get the utilities manager to review that. That has been done. And the other item that we had asked for was a sample rendering of the propos, what the gymnasium should look like in the future to make sure that it looked, like it would fit in with the residential character of the neighborhood. And you'll see in your last page of your packet that they did provide that. And I believe Mr. Rhodes also has a large, a larger version for you to look at.
Want me to pass it around?
Yeah, we can do that. You can see that it's got a, it has a mix, a mixture of, a mixture of materials to make it fit in with the residential character of the neighborhood.
So, is that the elevation that really fronts the back of the building right there?
Yes, facing this way, facing to the north, yes.
Okay. Yeah, but I mean, it faces, it faces the back of the building as it's showing right there on the flat, right?
Long side of Cherokee before the turn.
Sir, if you could step up to the podium for us. Come up.
My name's Chet Rhodes. I'm just trying to answer this question. Does face to the north toward the long side of Cherokee Drive? Of course, it bends there, so there's two sides. The pond is facing the curved side of Cherokee. And this side of the building would be facing, as you said, the back of the existing facility, but also facing the main portion of the street that it parallels, so.
Can you go back to the slide that shows the way it lays out there? Alright, so really, you slipped, you have, you have moved it downhill from that slide right there, correct? That slide right there is the old slide.
It is.
That is correct. That is correct, because you see before you in the plans that the building did move forward quite a bit, closer to the pond. That was the initial concept from the January meeting.
I just want to make sure we weren't looking at that to prove, but we're looking at this.
No, we're not. We're looking at this revised site plan you have in front of you.
The paper copies are correct. It's just that he emailed the new slide to Kyle, which, so it's in his.
Okay.
His documentation.
Just wanted to clarify that.
Yeah, so it will be, that, that main view is very visible from that portion of Cherokee that you're talking about here. Does that answer the question?
Yes.
Alright, thank you.
I have a question. I don't know if that, I'm sorry, Kristen?
Yes.
Or Randolph? Y'all make an answer there. And I've been studying and looking, and it says in Article III, general provisions. That's on page 19 in our book, and it gives the scopes of everything on buildings. And it says only one principal building on a lot in agricultural and residential districts. Only one principal building and its customary accessory buildings may hereafter be erected on any lot. So, I go back, I found that, because we're still in, yes, churches are permitted. But my concern is all the additional buildings on this one lot in a residential area. And then I go back to my R1 district where it says churches are permitted, no problem. But it says use is prohibited, and that's mobile homes. Now, I know we're in an argument now with the accessory building. Well, we know modular homes are different. They have certain things from the state, which we discussed previously. That is a modular structure, and it is also going to be a principal structure with the church. Am I not, am I not correct on that? I mean, if it was, if it was an addition to the church, that's one thing. Because you're adding to the primary structure. But here, we're adding several different structures in a residential zone, and we're saying only certain amount can be covered on these lots. Uh, no, actually, this is city. I mean.
I didn't know if you were asking me.
Yeah, no, this is actually city's interpretation of our own zoning ordinances.
I interpret the classroom as an accessory structure because it's smaller and the use is secondary to the church. So, I mean, the, it's part of the church complex, but because it's, it's, it's only going to be used a small fraction of the time, so I, I look at it, look at it as a, as an accessory structure.
But we also go back to the accessory structures in R1 zones.
Mm-hmm. And they are lap, I mean, it's, it's 1,440 square feet.
It says that an accessory structure has to be sec, has to be a secondary subordinate use to the primary, to the primary structure, which would be the church building itself.
Yep, and then we're going on and adding another building. It's going to be a gym. And this is still in a residential zone. See my point where I'm going with this?
Your, your point is how many accessory structures would be?
Exactly.
Allowed in the.
And you can only have so many square footage of your, of your lot serviced or used up in a residential area.
I don't know that, I don't know that I can answer unless you come up maybe and ask. As far as, and we may need to ask legal as far as when something has, when something is grandfathered in and is used as, because it never did receive a special exception. However, it, this building predates the zoning ordinance from when we had dissolved as a city. So, it's been, it's been a church the entire time in a residential district.
Yeah, but the church has not been questioned.
Right.
Because a church can go in an R1.
Sure.
But his accessories aren't grandfathered because they're not there to be grandfathered.
No, but you can build upon, non-conforming sites can be, you can continue to build upon them if it's within the confines of the, of the original boundary. So, as long as you're not going outside of the actual property lines, you can continue to build on that.
But they're not building on the church. They're adding buildings.
I know, it's a, it's a sticky legal.
I mean, if you, if you have to, whenever you disturb the area, and you have to make sure you have detention pond that can take care of the water, they didn't do that when that was built. If you have to update your site to accommodate that, then the thing about this to me is, this prefabricated building we have, it's not going to be used as a dwelling. It's going to be used as a classroom, where I mean.
Correct. It's good. We have to look at this site as a commercial site even though it's zoned residentially because that's the land use. Church is considered commercial as far as the land use.
It will not adhere to the R1 guidelines though, even though it's in R1?
It, it, it does need, it does need to. I mean, and that, it's where, it's, I guess it gets sticky because it's, it is R1, but it is grandfathered.
Well, I understand, I understand a church would be grandfathered and it's used. I have no, I understand that, but when you go changing, it's like any other, whether it's commercial or any other kind of business, whenever you go changing it to this extent, you're going to have to, you're going to have to go back and meet the new criteria for everything. And so, to me though, whenever you go with this R1 criteria that the mayor's talking about, you have to follow that. To me, since it's in a residential area, that, to me, that overrides any commercial you should have with it because it's supposed to fit to conform, conform to the, to the area around it. I mean, incorrect, am I incorrect in that thinking?
Because it's permitted. A church is.
A church is permitted.
But it still has some stipulations.
Even if it weren't permitted, even if it weren't permitted, it would still be allowed because it's grandfathered.
Well, the church would be, but.
The church, right.
But as we go forward, that's, what we're adding to is not grandfathered, just what's there is grandfathered. Am I correct or incorrect?
What is that, I'm, is there a question? I'm not sure if there's.
Well, my question is this, my question is this, what's there is what's grandfathered. What's going to be there is not grandfathered.
Well, it has to, right, and as far as the, that's why we held them to the requirements for stormwater and for water and sewer, and that's why they, I mean, they had to fit, they had to hit all the requirements in a, that a current site plan would have to have.
Well, I mean, they would be required whether it's residential or commercially, either one though. I mean, what we're talking about is going beyond that to me. I mean, you gotta, you gotta meet those requirements, it don't matter if it's residential, industrial, or, or commercial. Any one of those have to meet those requirements. Am I correct?
That's correct.
The R1 coverage clearly states that on any lot or parcel of land that the area occupied by all buildings, including accessory buildings, may not exceed 35% of the total area of such a lot or parcel. So, the question then becomes, does the proposed buildings and the existing building exceed 35% in total?
Yeah, the FAR is, it doesn't come anywhere near. Yeah. It's about 11%, I believe.
I want you all to get your discussion.
I'd say it's solid.
Do I need to make a motion to suspend the rule? Mr. Chairman, with some folks in the audience that want to speak, I'd like to make a motion to suspend the rules and give them the opportunity to speak on this matter.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We're going to suspend the motion for the public to speak. Okay, before, let's get some, let's get some ground rules first of all. When you start speaking, we're just, just go ahead and say what you need to say. But we're not gonna, we're not gonna go ahead and elaborate on other things that are not pertinent to our decision tonight, okay? We just need to stick straight to, as they say, just the facts, so we can just go through it.
Well, I think most of you know me, but I've lived on the Cherokee Drive for 52 years. Not in the same house, we're in another house now, and seen a lot of changes come and go. While we welcome the church, we respect the church, I think that some things ought to be taken in consideration.
One more time, then, I'm sorry to state your name for the, for the record, please.
State your name and your address.
Shirley Winfrey, 170 Cherokee Drive. Before you approve these plans, as you have them before you today, I would ask you not to approve them until you have the state come out and put a tag on this double-wide trailer, just as it is, before they even start construction or move it in under the disguise of a modular building. It came in with wheels under it, and when it was removed, it went out with wheels under it. And if it walks like a duck and quacks like a duck, it's probably a duck. I also want to be sure that issues such as flooding, blasting into rock has been resolved. And we'd like to see an engineer work with a city engineer, if need be. I've lived on Cherokee for several years, and the people that are, are looking at flooding problems from all these structures and everything, or even down on Walden Road. And the neighbor right behind me on Walden Road has a swimming pool every time it rains. And if there's more flooding issues coming down through there, I don't know if you'll be able to live there. I mean, it's a serious problems. I wonder if, I've not seen the latest plans. We did go down to the coach department and look at plans, and several things came up at those, looking at those plans. One was, we were very concerned with the runoff. And we wonder if they were taking it before they graded and cleared all that land up there? Or was that after they graded and cleared all that land? And I understand they did not have a permit for clearing. I don't know if that's not still required by the city. But at any rate, we have, approximately have to handle 40% more standing with it cleared and without grading permit. No ditches on the east side, and goes into the property on, draining to the adjacent property. The water drains back toward us, and it starts to go west instead of east as they had it on their drawings. Ditches already today are full of sediment, and is running across Cherokee Drive. So, I think the mayor has brought up a good issue, and all we're asking you to do is to wait until you get an approval, let the state go out there and put a tag on that double-wide trailer. Thank you.
Do we have someone else from the public who'd like to speak?
I'd like to speak in the public mode on behalf of my client, just to respond to the things that were said. First of all, I wanted to address the modular issue right away. Take a look at that, pass that around. This is a photograph of what our building will look like when it's finished on the property. It's not going to have wheels under it, it's going to be placed on there with a firm foundation, concrete block, concrete footer, skirt under it, and painted and looking very similar to what you have presented before you tonight. In fact, I'd even, you know, we wouldn't care if you make that a condition of approval is that it's looking in the condition that we're showing you, because that's the intent of the final design here. The second thing, she brought up the stormwater drains, which is a legitimate point she's brought up. But I want to, as the engineer for the church, let you know, Mr. Brown's done a great service to the city at Laverne. He's made me go through the two, five, 10, 25, 50, 100-year storm events and detain it and keep the peak flow from this site after development, after all the pavement, after the new parking, after the additions, with future growth. We've got a safety factor in our pond. And in this last round of comments from January to this month, he added that we go downstream to get the next structure, culvert if you will, below the pond and find out what size that was, and calculate the capacity of that and make sure that we didn't exceed that capacity with what we were discharging as a maximum for the 100-year storm from our pond. So, I want to assure the neighbors, and you know, I guess you're taking my word as a professional engineer. I do this all the time. This is going to be a major drainage improvement to that area from what it is now. I can imagine they get a lot of water now. With that big detention pond for what we're doing, there's going to be a big difference because there won't be, right now, the peak discharge from that site is 16.2 cubic feet a second. The most we're going to let out of our pond for the 100-year storm is seven and a half. So, we're knocking the peak way down. It'll be a dramatic stormwater improvement when it's finished. We have an erosion control plan to keep the dirt out of the ditches. Right now, nothing's been done. They don't have approval to do this. But first step if this is approved is to put the silt fence erosion control in to prevent those things from happening during construction. So, I think she had all valid points, but these are points that Mr. Brown has been emphatic that we addressed and that we haven't addressed. So, I wanted to make you aware of that. Thank you.
Can I ask you a question that quick?
Sure.
On the detention pond, what's the depth of it? Is it going to be seven feet deep?
It is approximately seven feet deep. Six, yes, sir, just about that. It depends on which point at the pond you are, but you can see the detention structure to your left of the pond, there's a detail there of it. If you just open up just a little further there, you can see on that same page.
Right here?
Right here. This shows.
Yeah, I see it right there.
That shows the outlet structure, where you can see the elevations called out at the bottom and the top of those structures. So, that would answer your question directly right there.
I'm curious to know myself, just from personal information, why did y'all strip all the land up behind the church there? If you're not going to be using it for anything, why did they take all the trees off of it and help stop some of the flow from coming down in? I'm just curious.
Well, I don't know why they cleared, they had cleared it before I got involved to start helping them with their site plan. I think they were trying to clear things for development, but.
Have y'all got everything flowing? I know Kyle's not here. Have you got everything flowing toward the detention pond?
Yes, sir. Actually, Kyle has made us improve the ditch line along Cherokee, and there is a ditch behind the gymnasium on the back side. So, the comment that the flow's going to be going offsite's not true. He's made me take all flow from the developed areas and channel it directly into the pond. In fact, if you look at the lower parking area closest to the pond, he made me regrade that and put an inlet there so that even the end of that parking area that's beyond the pond would have to come back and go into the pond. So, he's been very, very thorough.
You're going to catch a basin there, is that what you're saying?
Right, there's an inlet right over the pipe in that parking area that's going to cause flow. And we see the flow area is showing direction of flow there. That has to be graded to come back to the, to the pipe and into the pond, so.
So, you're showing all of, all the drainage down the ditch being caught down here at the head wall and taken to the detention pond.
That's exactly right. Yes, sir. And that main pipe is, you know, probably 80 to 100 foot long. It's not there now. Would arrest everything coming to that point and put it into the pond. So, we achieve the detention that's needed, and that'll be the major improvement to the area. So, really, if they're having flooding problems now, this should knock it down in half of what they've had out there for each and every storm. So, I would think that they'd experience a real improvement, but they won't see that till it's built and done and operating as designed, so. But I appreciate it. Thank you.
Do you have any more?
My name's Herbie Rader. I live at 166 Cherokee. And as a comment or a couple of questions to ask, from the off-site drainage that you say you're controlling, from the plans I see here, there's no ditch. It's all going to run perpendicular, everything from half of the gymnasium over to, is going to get on to the adjacent property owner. Most of the flooding is going to come from the uncontrolled release off your pavement that's going to go across the road and head down or head east, no, head west around the curve. Because there's nothing down there to stop it. The ditch is there. You sit, stand in any of the yards and look and see that the road is falling off to the west in lieu of the east, in lieu of the way it's, it's graded. It said there is no ditch behind this set of plans right here to, to. here to, to stop any flow from, all that flow is being directed toward the road and on to Ms. Russell's property, and things like that. Then the question about the runoff numbers, was that number before the grading was done, or after the grading was done, to start seeing the runoff calculations? Those are questions that I would think would need to be asked and looked at as you go through the program. Thank you.
The drainage calculations are with the staff. They have those. They do outline the predeveloped condition, and then they detail the post-developed condition, so that it's very detailed. And that document's there, and we make it available to the, to the gentleman that wanted to see that. But the comment that the runoff's going offsite is just something that's untrue, and per the plan, it's gonna be going into the pipe along Cherokee. In order to see, there's two sheets that show the grading, C2 and the erosion control sheet as well. See the flow areas here? There's the ditch, and it comes into this pipe, and then it comes into here. And there's an inlet to pick that up. And this is a ditch on the backside of this, taking flow into here, so. Plus, there is a note on the plans in the corner that directs the contractor to provide that ditch. So the ditch is visible, and it's called for by note on the plan. So there will be ditches taking the flow to the pond. So I wanna arrest that comment, make sure people understand that. Thanks.
Would you look right here?
Sure.
I got a question for you right here.
If memory serves me, when we were on that property, where he's talking about, that's up higher than this level, than the run. So how can the water go up the hill?
Well, you can see the contours right there on the plan.
Well, you can draw all day long, but up, water ain't gonna roll up it though.
I, I agree with you. And that's why they're graded to drain all the way down. It's gravity flow all the way, ma'am. I'm gonna try to co and answer.
All I can say is that Kyle reviewed it and.
I'm just asking, because I've been on this property.
I wish I could.
Sure. Well, I can answer it directly in front of.
And you said it was going that way, I'm like, oh.
I don't see what's gonna keep this.
You see here, these contours, you can see their label. These are existing contours. This contour comes over and connects this pipe elevation, takes it right into that pond. And that inlet's called out, so it is lower here than it is here. So we're not having the water draining up here.
Sir, if you could step over here for a second, I think the vice chairman has a question.
Yes, sir. I'd be glad to. I just wanna make sure I could.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you.
He just needs to ask your question.
I'm just gonna ask you, now, as the flow comes off the hill right here, some of it's gonna be diverted down the pavement. It's gonna be collected here, come down and out this way.
Right.
This coming this way right here, is all of it gonna be collected in this one?
No, no, no. A lot of this is gonna sheet flow to the ditch on Cherokee, but we've added two culverts under the drives, and that existing ditch has to be cleaned out and directed here. Once it gets to this point, the flow is right in this pipe. There's a pipe there, taking into the pond into this head wall. So basically, the design is, everything sheets to here, comes around, picked up. It's not going over. We checked the capacity of these culverts that we've designed. And we had it designed for more discharge than before, but because of the smaller culvert down here, the twelve inch at the driveway downstream, we reduced the flow to even less than we had initially.
So from here, from here to there, you got a foot fall, right?
Yes, sir. Actually, a couple feet, but, yeah, in the pipe, a foot, yes.
Nine thirty, nine twenty-nine?
Right.
All right. Is, is this pipe coming out two feet above the bottom of that?
It is. So that's why I say you got three foot of fall at the bottom pond, and one foot to the end of the pipe, yes.
Let me ask you a question then. When this pond, so we have a severe rain come in and fill this pond up, it's covered up above the top of that, where's this water gonna go then?
Well, everything has to go through the outlet structure. It's designed so that for the hundred-year storm, we have to design for a known storm. And for this event, it does not overtop. A hundred-year storm will not overtop this pond or the structure. It's big enough to handle that.
Yeah, I understand, I understand that, though, but when the, when you get two feet of water in the bottom of this, it's gonna cover this pipe right here.
Right.
And it's still raining. This water's still coming off, hitting in this ditch. Supposedly going there, but with that thing being full, where does the water go from there?
Six thirty-four is right up here in the ditch. That head, hydraulic head pushes it through all the way, so it's not overtop.
It, it doesn't matter how.
It's limited. The top of the pond can't be hundred-six thirty-four, so it keeps it from doing that, so.
At nine thirty-four, yeah. Yeah, but I'm, I'm just saying, if this thing is full, if this thing is half full, say it's seven feet deep or six feet deep, and there's three foot or four foot of water in it, as the water comes off, there's enough head pressure to push it on in there anyway.
Yes. It's a hydraulic slope is what it's called, and it does, and I teach at Tennessee State University in the Civil Engineer Department, this, this whole concept of structures and hydraulic slope and that. And I meant to speed you a line, I'm telling you, it's right here. I'm just telling you. It works, and it drains to the pond. It doesn't overtop Cherokee.
So it won't, it won't come out of that ditch?
No, because that ditch is higher than, the top of the pavement here is higher than here. Now, if this were allowed to get higher, then what you were referring to would, would occur. And you don't want that. So we have, we looked at that in the design.
Okay.
It's a good comment, and it's something that we gotta look at every time. I've seen them done that way, where they did overtop, and then you're trying to fix them after the fact.
I was asking, I just wanted to ask a question.
Yes, sir. I understand. Thank you.
Thank you.
Question for Kristen. Kristen, on the other comments, number two, insulation sidewalks should occur. Did that ever get resolved?
It would depend, it just, it just depends on the order that they will, that they will do it in. If they do the building additions, because we don't know what, what timeframe the building additions will come in versus the gym. If, if the gym comes in first, then it has to come at that point. If the building additions are more than fifty percent of the existing, then it'll have to come in at that point, so.
What do we need to understand? I'm not sure.
Just wanna make sure we, we're all understanding the, the installation of sidewalks, when they, when they're gonna occur. It was item two and other concerns during the workshop.
It, we just, we discussed that it depends on the timeframe, because we don't know when, which building additions will happen versus the gym, so.
Yeah, but the client does understand, as they build those buildings, they do have to add sidewalks.
Yes.
So Kristen, how are they gonna handle, the, the flat doesn't show, the drawing doesn't show the sidewalks presently, so do we have the right of way or the, the space to put those in at later date?
Do, I'm sorry, do we have the?
Do we have the, the sidewalks not shown presently on there?
Correct.
Do we have the right of way and the property to do it when they do build?
Uh, based on, yes, yes, we do. And if we don't, then they will have to, there will have to be a right of way dedication to, to accomplish that, so.
Is there any note on the plan about that at all? I mean, on the site plan about that at all? I hadn't seen one, anything about sidewalk. And I don't see any drawn on here for.
Right. They weren't, they weren't drawn on because, well, if you recall, we had, we had too much, we had asked actually for some of the information to be removed, what Kyle had, because it was too hard to read it all. And because that was, it was, it was undetermined which phase it would come in at, they, they weren't drawn on there. So we could certainly ask for, or we can make it part of the, make it part of the minutes that it comes in either at the gym phase or the fifty percent addition phase, whichever occurs first.
And so the sidewalk was run all along their property, correct?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, is that gonna affect, affect the ditch line? When we, with the time, when we, if we do the concrete there, that's gonna affect that ditch line?
I mean, that's something that they'll have to look at when they, at that, at that phase, so.
Does anyone else would like to speak? Come forward, please.
Scott, Scott Smith, 172 Cherokee Drive, right directly across the street in this property. Most of the issues have been addressed by the neighbors here. Got one quick question for the engineers. How will a seven-foot-deep detention pond be developed when the entire hill is rocks? And then why revise the plans for sidewalks? Why not get everything for revisions?
I appreciate the questions. I think if, or call, the first question was, why was the seven-foot-deep detention area, how would that be addressed? I'll tell you, it's a three-to-one slope on the embankments, which is a mobile slope. It's a grass structure, so it's gonna be grass. This is the detention pond, not a retention pond, which means it's gonna be grass ninety-five, hundred, all, close to a hundred percent of the time. It's only gonna have water in it when there's a large storm, and it fills up with water. It dewater's within twenty-four hours. So this is not a pond that's gonna be holding water. It's a stormwater detention structure, so that we don't adversely affect the neighbors downstream. So it is a grass structure. It's mobile, maintainable, and we have to maintain it. Part of the agreement with the city when site plans are approved, that we have to have a maintenance agreement, and that we will maintain the detention in a good-conditioned mode and vegetated. It has to be well-established vegetation. That's part of the plan, as you see on the erosion control plans that Kyle requi, Mr. Brown required. And so, you know, I, I like it as a, you know, an area that's pleasing to the eye. It's gonna be green, grassed area, and it's gonna be at a embankment that's not so steep that it's, you know, it's not a maintenance problem to deal with, so. Thank you.
Excuse me, sir. You didn't ask the second question.
Second question, I believe, was regarding, why didn't we just go ahead and show the sidewalks at this time? Short answer is, we're aware, the staff are making us aware with those two comments in their letter to us. They didn't ask us to address that on the plan. They asked us to be aware of that, that at a certain time, we would have to do that. And our client understands that, and certainly will provide those sidewalks at that time. We're at that built condition to, to warrant those. So we're, we're gonna comply with that, and send the minutes in the previous minutes of the meeting, so we fully intend to comply with your request and your requirements. Thanks.
Are there any other questions? Okay, at this time, I'm gonna ask the members for a discussion, for any discussion. Okay, then are we ready to take a vote? And the vote is to? We need, yeah, we're gonna have a motion for the, now are we sending a?
It's a site plan.
It's just, we're just gonna.
Okay, we're gonna have a motion on the site.
To approve or not approve, yeah.
Okay. At this time, do I hear a motion to approve the site plan for the Archangel Mike Kopic Orthodox Church? Okay. Do I hear a motion to not approve the site plan?
I'll make a motion to deny, subject to the, the planning of the sidewalks not being installed on the planner submitted.
Okay, I have a motion to deny due to the sidewalk plans not being submitted. Do I have a second? Second. All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Let's have a roll call on it.
Aye.
This is for denial of the site plan.
You're, you're right. If you want to deny, it's aye.
Okay.
Okay. There.
And I vote aye, and I'm gonna, I'd like to state my reasoning, because I still go back to the R1 districts and the modular homes. I don't think those are conducive to where they're sitting on these plans and in.
Aye.
Aye, and I'll concur with the mayor.
Aye.
I as well.
And I will vote aye. We have a unanimous decision to deny the site plan for the Archangel Mike Kopic Orthodox Church, Orthodox Church. Next, we have a bonds and letters of credit update.
Okay, chairman, vice chairman, and the rest of the planning commission, we have three bonds, or three, we have three letters of credit coming up. March thirtieth, we have phase sixty-two and seventy-three of Lake Forest, and phase seventy-six and seventy-seven of Lake Forest, as well as on April fifteenth, we've got Lake Forest Phase sixty-six. Those are the next three that are coming about, and I have been informed that there has been an agreement with First Tennessee Bank, and the city is working to call on those in the immediate future. The April fifteenth one will be called after April first. The remainder are all up to date, as far as I, as far as I've been aware, or have been informed by Mr. Brown.
Do you have any further questions from the member?